Please.
Dr. Corwina, here. Mr. Doltry.
Here.
Dr. Mojar. Mr. Morella.
Here.
Mr. O'Brien.
Here.
Mr. Rappaport.
Here.
And Ziff Zacharman.
Here.
Mr. Palma.
Here.
Mr. Graff.
Present. Flags, please. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with provisions of the Act, the Montefeld Township Board of Education provided a public notice of this meeting, which included time, date, and location, that was posted on the Montefeld Township Municipal Building, Alholl Montefeld Township Public Schools, the Montefeld Township Public Library, the Montefeld Township Board of Education Administrative Office Building, the district website, and advertised in the Daily Record, the board's official newspaper, on August fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
Thank you. We don't have any student reps with us. I guess they'll show up in the second meeting in September or something like that.
They've been elected, so yes, they will join us in September.
Getting in from?
Yes, we definitely.
Superintendent Kennedy, remarks?
Just a couple of things. We are, we've been very busy since the meeting in July, making all the preparations for the opening of school. I know Mrs. Slim is going to talk a little bit about where we stand in terms of the referendum construction, but today we had the first of our two days of our administrative retreat. Next week, on Monday and Tuesday, we will have our new teacher orientation, and then all of the staff will be back Wednesday and Thursday, with the students coming back the day after Labor Day, so we are all ready for that. We do have Scott McGowan, our Officer McGowan, our SRO, has moved himself into his new office at the high school. And he, we interviewed, I believe, the township is in the process of doing the formal hiring for one of the Class Three officers who will be joining us, and actually, that person will probably be working on a full-time capacity. I know our original concept is to have two officers share that position until they hire the second officer that the first person will, does have the flexibility of, you know, kind of working full-time until we get that other person on board, so we're very excited about having that staff come on board. The other thing I wanted to share is yesterday we received notification that three of our schools, Hilldale, Valley View, and Woodmont, all achieved Bronze Level status with the Sustainable New Jersey program, so that will be celebrated at the school board's convention.
Which schools, really?
Valley View, Hilldale, and Woodmont.
Cedar Hill was left out in?
Well, right, they didn't, they haven't applied. Lazar got it last year, so, you know, we're, we're working through, hopefully all of our schools will eventually attain that. So, so we're very proud of that because it's very rigorous criteria in terms of, of the actions that these schools have to engage in in order to get that certification.
What's the name of the program?
Sustainable Jersey for Schools. And, and that's it for me this evening.
Good to tell those principals that we're really proud and thank you for their accomplishments. I appreciate it.
I was wondering if you know Officer McGowan's location of his office in the high school? I was just wondering, is it inside the rotunda or is it more accessible outside?
His actual office is within the offices, within the main office. He's actually inside that, the main office suite. I don't actually foresee him spending any large amount of time in his office, aside from, you know, having to complete some paperwork, but I, I think, just as he has been, you know, with the engagement that we've had, having him in the schools, I think he's largely going to be out and about.
Do you know what the CLO three has experienced, the one that they, just to give it a honorary?
Oh, he does have the SRO certification, but he has not served in that role, but we think he's very capable and think he's the kind of person that, you know, will fit in well at the high school.
Any presentations?
I do not.
Is it for your superintendent's report?
I do not.
Okay, business administrator, Mr. Slim?
I just wanted to go and update you on the referendum, and this is the kind of presentation that does better in picture form. So, just sort of as a summary, we, at the high school, as part of this phase of the referendum, we are doing a partial roof replacement and brick repointing, bathroom renovations, gymnasium upgrades, air conditioning, and all of the schools are being affected by the HVAC controls. That's the piece where we are going to be able to remotely control the rise and fall of the temperature in the classrooms. If you recall, last time, we showed you these pictures of the bathrooms, and this is where we are now. At this point, what's left is the fixtures and getting those into the toilets, the sinks, those types of things. Those, that's pretty much what all the bathrooms look like. And if you recall, this is what the gym looked like, and that was the gym this morning. The big piece is the floor will be, actually, that's the old floor, the floor will be stripped next week, and we, the bleachers are en route, and will be arriving later this week. They will then begin the process of installing the bleachers. This is the one area that we all agreed we would have a delay past the opening of school in order so that the bleachers could be installed first and the floor be finished after, so that there wouldn't be any damage to the floor. So, as a result, this particular space will not be released until the seventeenth of September. What will happen is while the kids are on the, the holiday breaks during that early part of September, they will be putting the lining and then the sealing of the floor, that takes a couple of days for it to cure, and then it'll be open for use. Things to note, up in the ceiling, that used to be all black, and now it's white, and the crossbeams, all the beaming is all green. Unfortunately, a little bit, you can see, up, on the left-hand corner, go down a little, you'll see a bunch of, like a fan, that's your big fan that you bought. There are two of them, and they're gigantic. When they are on, they couldn't easily blow paper all around the room if that's what we wanted them to do. So, we may find that those fans work so great, we don't use the air conditioning all that much. On your agenda, you do have some change orders that are related to projects at the high school. By and large, most of those projects, or most of those change orders relate to things we found as we began to open up the walls that really needed to be completed due to them either being broken or something like that, or just if we left it, whatever the item was, it was going to look really kind of beat up and shoddy in comparison to everything being nice and new. The next is Lazar, again, we have an almost full roof replacement there, bathroom renovations, the gymnasium upgrades, media center renovations, and again, air conditioning and HVAC controls. So, this is what the bathrooms look like, one of the bathrooms we showed you last time. And now, you're getting the partitions in. One of the interesting things that we did at Lazar was those walls are actually a gray epoxy paint. We are testing this out, the architects have used this in other places. We paint prep over the old tile and paint them, and we got a uniform color across all of the bathrooms. If this works, this may be some possible solutions to the multicolored hallways at Lazar as we begin to move into beautification. This was the gym, and that is the gym. The lights in the gym make the gym so much brighter, it's amazing. There are only nine lights in that space, and the room is significantly brighter. And then this was the media center, and this is the media center now. I don't know if you can see the two-tone, the flooring that's the closest to us right now, that would be the cafe area, it's sort of a Starbucks kind of looking area with seating and with tables. There is then a little pathway that's a darker color made out of that same hard fab, or hard flooring, and then the back corner is all rug, that's where the books will be. And so that there is three different sections, and they're all delineated based on the floors. And then this is the area that is going to be the closed small group construction, similar to what you see at the high school with the areas that are behind the glass doors, that will also be behind the glass doors. On Friday, we were notified that although we had put the order in for what's called the storefronts, that's the glass that goes to close all those spaces off, we put that order in, in May, they are, they wanted to ship to us in October, and we told them no way. We've got them down to September sixth, but there is a possibility we may start school with no storefronts because of the shipping issue with the contractor. This is the manufacturer that's causing the problem, not the actual subcontractor or contractor. But we're pushing to see if they can get to us a couple of days early so that the contractors are willing to come in on Labor Day to do the installation in order to make sure it's done for school. Cedar Hill, again, bathroom renovations, gymnasium upgrades, media center renovations, and air conditioning and HVAC controls. That's what the bathroom used to look like, and that's the bathroom now. At Cedar Hill, the floor has like little red speckles in it, which is their color, and it looks very nice. This was the gym, and that's the gym now. Now, both at Cedar Hill and at William Mason, we, there is a chance that the floor may be a little delayed, we are pushing the vendor, the contractors really hard. When it rained, some of the hard rainstorms, we found that the walls where the glass is, the glass openings were leaking. And it really wasn't the floor, but it's going to be a flooring issue if we glue it down, so we're fixing that and caulking those. Basically, fifty years later, the caulk was disintegrating.
Was there a change order?
That, it's not on for this because I didn't have the numbers, it'll be on for the fourth, but they're moving forward anyway. We did discuss that in finance and facilities. And that'll get the floors, but that is something that is still pending. And then this was the library at Cedar Hill, and this is the library right now. There is a little snafu on the ordering of the tile. I have to say, that tile is beautifully laid. We are laying another tile on top of it that will be just that middle gray color and not as crazy looking.
That's a change order over there?
That is a change order on the agenda today. And lastly, we have William Mason's roof. If you're over at William Mason, they're ripping the roof off right now. Bathroom renovations, gymnasium upgrades, media center, and the air conditioning and HVAC controls. That's what the bathroom looked like before, and again, we've got the sinks in, the toilets in, the partitions in. This is the gym, and that's now the gym. And mostly what's holding us up at William Mason like at Cedar Hill is we're just waiting on that caulking to be done so that it's all watertight, and then they'll finish laying the floor. That goes very fast, it's like a day job, so we're not concerned that that's going to be delayed. And that's the media center, and there's the media center with even its bookshelves in it. So, where we are in terms of open items. Installation at the high school, bathroom fixtures, and the final inspection. As you know, the bleachers and the floor finishing in the gym, and starting tomorrow, the huge crane will arrive at the high school to put in the steel beams to up, to hold up the roof units, and we'll be lifting the roof units up over probably tomorrow, Thursday, and then on possibly Monday. So, as a result, we'll be pulling people out of the high school, get vacated for a two-hour period of time, just in case anything falls through.
How about the bathrooms?
Bathrooms are on target, even though I know the fixtures are piled up in the hallways.
What's the target?
Target is the thirty-first.
Okay, thank you.
So, at the high school, the only thing that's possibly delayed is the bleachers. Keep in mind that the air conditioning units were never intended to be done by the beginning of school, and those will be the, part of it is what's going to be lifted on the roof tomorrow, and the other part is what goes in the classrooms, that's running through the end of September. Lazar, the roof installation is at ninety-five percent complete, installation of bathroom fixtures and inspections, final floor finishes, and refinishing the stage in the gym. And then the big piece that we're waiting on is to see those storefronts come in before the start of school. So, that is a possible area that might be delayed past the fourth. Cedar Hill, installation of the bathroom fixtures and inspections, the gym completing the wall repair that we just mentioned and floor finishes, but we believe that will be done in time, and then finishing up the relay of the floor and inspections of the media center. And finally, at William Mason, the installation of the roof is currently being done. Again, installation of bathroom fixtures and inspections, the gym issue with the wall and caulk, the caulking, finishing the floor, and media center inspections. So, by and large, we're pretty much going to be done on time with the exception of a few little items, and we're even hoping with those few little items, we'll end up having those done so that, our goal is only the bleachers by the fourth. That'll be delayed.
Any questions for the team, for this project?
The bleachers in the high school, they just totally collapse into the wall?
They don't collapse into the wall, they fold, they, they are more compact.
Well, against the wall, against.
They're against the wall, yes.
Mike?
Not a question, but a comment.
Comment?
Okay. I just want to say that, from my personal observation, I, I'd like to commend the people that are involved in this project. Watching some of the things unfold, this is bigger than just the schools and, you know, the academic parts of the, of this puzzle here are used by the community nightly throughout the year, and what we're really presenting to the community is a first-class operation. The high school gym is so expansive when you look in it, you know, it's, it's hard to believe it's just the same place that it was. It's going to be beautiful, and I think, even if there's a short delay with some of those things, obviously the bathrooms will be done, but I, I think it's worth it to get this done right, not just for the students in the school, it's a whole community thing. This is something the whole community shares, all the recreation programs, all the programs up the winter at night, and we're really showing a first-class operation to the community and to visitors from outside the community for games and events that they place there. So, my, I commend.
William Mason, were those air conditioning units on the wall behind the basketball net?
Yes, but they were already there.
Are they going to be, so they were never covered for?
No, they never were covered. The, the way they are is the way they've always been. And those are the ductless splits, which are throughout.
I also would like to commend the team and the rest of the administrative team. Until you've done this, you can appreciate all the problems that you can encounter. It's bad enough just doing it in one school. Remember the library we had at the high school, that one, but the Ram wrote three, four schools through at one time, and to get all of them to where we are now, and I was amazed with all the rain we've had, that we hadn't had floods come in through the roof, but evidently it buttoned up good, and I, I think, think of it this way, if you think next summer it's going to be easier, there's only going to be three schools.
Oh, no, we're already gearing up for more.
Thank you very much for you and the rest of the people.
I will pass that along to Mr. Toof.
Okay, we have reports, finance and facilities?
Well, Katin just.
Took your report.
Yeah, that's good, that's good. We did go through some of this at facilities and finance without the lovely pictures. And we did also go through the change orders that are on the agenda. Other items that were discussed at the meeting were the electronic signs at Cedar Hill and Valley View. At Cedar Hill, we're waiting for the JCP and L hookup, and at Valley View, we're actually waiting for the sign. And the branding on the maintenance vehicle and van trucks are completed, so the van truck now has logo. There are items on the agenda tonight that address some of the financial positions of the district in terms, in terms of state aid and extraordinary aid, and that was really the, the crux of our meeting.
Thank you. Mike, curriculum instruction, I know there's a meeting next week, or next?
September fourth, actually.
September fourth, okay. Policy, I know John, I read in the minutes or something, recite, he's going to schedule a separate meeting sometime, okay? Communications, Karen, anything from the last meeting?
No.
No, I gave a report, the last meeting on the agenda tonight of the official minutes.
Safety hasn't met, John, right? Ad hoc, that's the only thing we had there was the SRO meeting with the town, so, so I'm interested in that. Any delegates?
Yeah.
Karen was still the president of the Morris County School Boards.
Yes.
And we have the first meeting coming up in?
September twentieth. You all should have received a, a letter that indicates what the dates are for the five meetings this year. There's September twentieth, November seventh, January thirty-first, March twentieth, and May twenty-third, all, all the different topics. The first topic is how your district can effectively communicate with the media and the community. I'd like to point out that the November topic, social emotional learning, meeting the needs of all students, Dr. Roltitar has graciously accepted an invitation to be a participant in that meeting, so thank you. Keep the groaning down. Who groan?
My birthday, I have to have a little luck.
Seven, seven, yes.
Can, Katin, can you sign me up for the five Morris County ones?
Yeah, sign a, sign me up, too.
Michaelton? Sign you up for the five Morris County ones?
Well, I got a Mustang for those nights.
So, the January thirty-first meeting, the foundations, Foundations for Success. In this meeting, we're going to be doing breakout sessions that will satisfy requirements for governance two, three, and four, and that, we are hosting it in Montefeld, so maybe we can get a strong showing from the board. And so those are the five dates, you should have this in your email if you don't let me know and get your copy. And then New Jersey School Boards, in September, there's a legislative meeting, and on September twenty-second, there's a county association leadership meeting. And that concludes?
That's it?
Those two.
So, Mike, I guess Karen's giving your report for the Morris County.
Sorry, Mike.
The, John, is it, did you submit during the summer, Morris County, that's over?
They did not meet in July, I was not here for August.
Okay. Trevor Winters, Mr. Palmer?
Our meeting for this month is canceled.
The Mustangs, Mike?
The meet, the first Wednesday.
Wednesday meeting?
First Wednesday, which is the fifth.
September fifth.
September fifth?
September fifth, yeah.
That's usually a pretty well-attended meeting.
It should be, and that, you know, membership is open to anybody that wants to join.
Any, no PTC meetings on the summer, I guess? Negotiations, Karen?
So, I'm really pleased that we'll be able to meet with the association on next Tuesday, August twenty-eighth, and we have another meeting on September twelfth, and that will be, both meetings will be with the mediator, and, you know, we're, we're looking forward to, to the meetings.
The MTDA, the committee's met, we met, ladies, yesterday, and we haven't scheduled a meeting yet, but we will. Supervisors are meeting next Monday, I believe, with the supervisors, right?
Yes. Yes.
Any additional reports? Total participation, Scott, you don't have anything to say, do you?
No, sir.
Okay. Consent resolution, please. Now, remember, there's the resolution plus a couple of addendums, ladies? How many addendums do we have? A staff, a teacher appointment at Valley View, and a settlement agreement. So, the resolution would lead the agenda, plus those two addendums, and we have a motion, please. Michelle Zuckerman's second, Karen? Okay, first item is minutes, comments. Second one is item J, administration. Item K, which is the financial, as Katin mentioned, we have, I think I saw a couple change orders on here somewhere, right?
Yeah, number twelve.
And she explained a couple of the biggies. If anyone has any questions, please let us know. Disposal of equipment, not a problem. Personnel, in addition to the ones here, we have one addition for the Valley View, first grade. L is appointments, adjustments, stipends, all of these budgeted, I assume?
Yes.
Yes. We have some volunteer coaches on item L. Curriculum and instruction, item M. And finally, we have policy, item N one, I think one board member might have a question on that, so Mike, I want you to bring up your question, and we'll see what it is.
Right, there's not so much a question, it's just a concern with policy five, five-one-two, it's on the agenda. In, in reading it over, I understand, first of all, I understand this is provided to us, and we need to, to adopt this policy before the start of school. I'm just concerned that how it's worded, the wording of the policy, it's how it's given to us, doesn't necessarily represent the intent behind the policy. And I understand from Dr. Schroeder that additional information needs to be forthcoming on this policy, there are missing pieces. And so, as soon as those pieces become available to bring to our attention and get them incorporated into our portfolio of policies, it would be very helpful because as it stands now, this policy is open to interpretation in different ways and not necessarily meaning the intent behind the, behind the policy, and why you're going to give it to us in the first place.
Can you see any comments?
No, you know, we discussed that with the policy committee, that, you know, the guidance by NJDU hasn't been released yet, should have been, but it hasn't been. But on the flip side of that, the code requires that this policy be in place by September first, which is why we're, we're awaiting our bylaws to approve it through one reading. So, the recommendation of our policy committee was to approve this because it has to be in place, and it encompasses the, the spirit of, of the law and the changes, but they did acknowledge that as soon as NJDU guidance is released, it'll provide additional information that will require probably a policy modification, and then we'd have to go through and approve a new policy at that point. So, yes, there will be changes to this and additions, but this is all the, the guidance we had to put this through, and the additional guidance that should be released hopefully in September will only be added to this, and hopefully clear up some of those issues.
And we can make it after September, as long as we're stable in the parameters of the law.
Correct.
That answer your question?
It does. It does, it's mature.
Yeah, I have a question on N one. I thought we weren't going to put this on the agenda until it went through committee, and look, on the website, it's not on our website, says reserve no action for N one. All of a sudden, I see they're on the agenda.
It's, it's not on the agenda. I mean, it was removed from the agenda.
That's, oh, so, because I just pulled a piece, it's, it's here on the.
Well, if you were on the workbook, you would see it's not on the agenda.
I, I understand, that's why.
Change, change, very remote from agenda.
Okay, it was on the piece of paper that's out there.
Well, that's not the agenda.
Okay, all right, well, that's, that's our mistake because we did remove that, we're not taking action on that tonight.
That was a question.
Yes.
Okay? Okay. Any other comments? Mrs. Slum, roll call, please.
Ms. Suckerman?
Yes.
Dr. Forte?
Yes.
Mr. Doctor?
Yes.
Mr. Morella?
Stay on minutes, yes, and everything else.
Mr. O'Brien?
Aye.
Mr. Rapoport?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Next party of the agenda, if there's those people in the audience and opportunity, we'd like to speak on something that's not on the agenda. Seeing that we have no questions.
Glad to, but...
Have a good opening of school, Scott.
Thank you, sir.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
Will move.
Second, whoever, all in favor? Thank you very much.